Good evening, like call meeting order at seven oh one. Again, good evening, welcome to the Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District thirteen Board Meeting for Tuesday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen. If you would, please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, please.
Lewis.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
Landwehr.
Here.
Meyer. Here.
Thank you. Mission statement for Columbia Heights Public Schools. Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. For the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. To approve the agenda, looking for a motion to move that forward?
I'll move that forward.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements, March tenth, Tuesday, seven P.M., regular school board meeting here in the community room. March seventeenth, Tuesday at five-thirty, school board listening session in the family center foyer. March seventeenth, Tuesday, six P.M., school board work session in the community room. March twenty-fourth, Tuesday, seven P.M., regular school board meeting in the community room. March thirtieth through April third, no school, spring break. April third, Friday, no school, district is closed. And then April sixth, Monday, no school, is a grading day. Is there any correspondence? Mr. Chair members, there's none at this time. Okay, thank you. Moving right along. Communication to the board, citizens and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on the requests represented at this time. So anyone that would like to speak? You guys are all supposed to be here, so we won't count you. Okay. Moving on to consent agenda, could I get a motion to move that forward, please?
I'll move that forward.
Molly?
Second.
Second by Lori. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Acknowledgements of contributions. We do have acknowledgements tonight, and it's a resolution, and I'll read it, and then we'll move it forward. Okay, acknowledgement of contributions, whereas Minnesota statute one-two-three-B-point-zero-two permits school boards to receive for the benefits of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District number thirteen, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of five thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. And the background, monetary, a donation of eight hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents was made to Valley View Elementary by Target Take Charge of Education for Student Needs. A donation of seven hundred dollars is made to North Park Elementary by Target Field Trip Grants for the Art Field Trip. Donation of a hundred and forty dollars was made to North Park Elementary by Financial One Credit Union for the kindergarten field trip. Donation of a thousand dollars was made to the Columbia Heights High School by Columbia Heights High School Class of two thousand thirteen for mural. A donation of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars is made to the Columbia Heights High School from the class of two thousand thirteen for the band trip show tickets. A donation of seventy-five dollars is made to North Park Elementary by Jim and Joanne Fishbox for supplies for reading projects. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Program. John and Sharon Elderton the third, fifty dollars, and James and Mary Appfell, hundred and fifty dollars. For value and kind, donation of iPod Shuffle to the Columbia Heights Academy from Sheena Ellis, estimated value of a hundred and twenty dollars. Donation of shelving unit with bins to North Park Elementary from Jim and Joanne Fishbox, estimated value of twenty-five dollars. Total fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen monetary contributions to date, forty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. And could I get a motion to move that forward, please? Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Grant. Okay, so, the motion for the adoption of foregone resolution duly seconded by Member Grant upon a vote being taken thereof, voted in favor, so I need a roll call. Lori.
Nichols.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Landwehr.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion reports and information items, at this time, reports members from the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Molly.
I attended the work session last week, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori.
The same for me, just last week's work session, and that's all I have to report.
Okay. Ted.
I attended a chair meeting before this meeting, and also was at the WMAP Board Meeting, Joint Powers Board Meeting, and the WMAP Joint Powers Board did vote to convey the both fair schools, the downtown school to Minneapolis and the Crystal School to Robinsdale. What that means is that they will have different owners, but hopefully the same programs going forward. And the conveyance has to be approved by the legislature, so this is just the first step towards starting that process. And it was a unanimous vote with all the joint powers members. And also attended the North Park PTO, had the privilege of attending that, it was, it's a very dynamic, fun group, and I've got a lot of big plans for supporting North Park, and it was a pleasure to be there. And also attended the work session, and I think that's it.
Thanks, Grant.
I attended the work session also last week. I also attended the family fun night at Valley View, which was fun, because I played kickball with all the kids down there, and I was pitching to them. I also went to play at North Park for the African Heritage, and it was really enlightening. I really, you know, it was a joy to see the, you know, kids and everything, and the heritage put on by the play, the people that put on the play. Like to thank North Park's PTA for putting that on, because they said they sponsored that, so. Then I did the plunge for the city, the fire and ice, and that was, it was a joy to see a lot of people out there and raising good money for a good cause, so. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Laura.
Well, I attended the work study session last week, and then I had a very nice meeting, kind of an impromptu meeting with Chair Larkin. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Anything else?
I don't think so. I think I was pretty quiet.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, last week, attended the chair meeting, the listening session and the work session. I was able to attend, the high school had their band concert last night, and that was fun to listen to the kids. They sounded really good. And I guess just going backwards for just a second, just reminding people that we are doing the listening sessions, and, you know, we would encourage people to come. They're posted, they're generally speaking the third Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. And then the chair meeting tonight before this, this meeting, so that's all I have. Superintendent's report.
Mr. Chair members, the directors and I met, had our quarterly non-licensed labor management meeting, it was light, we only had one agenda item, but it was good to see everybody again. Director Holmgren and I attended the February eleventh WMAP Joint Powers Board Meeting that Vice Chair Landwehr was talking about, and witnessed the conveyance of the schools to Minneapolis and Robinsdale. It was a bittersweet night for us, because I've been around long enough to see them give birth, and now to be moved, was, it was, I thought, kind of moving, and I thought the speeches were very impassioned by board members and very thoughtful. What I conveyed to the chair and the vice chair is that the district administration is now working on the H.R. aspects of the conveyance of the schools in preparation that if this moves forward, that we would have everything done legally and on time, and in alignment with our own staffing that's going on this spring. The pre-K twelve program efficiencies and economies continues to meet, and the staffing process is well underway, so we're hoping that we will make our deadlines and have things to you, to the board later in March. Director Burkus and I met with Minnesota Department of Education, the Continuous Improvement Plan Compliance Monitor was out, and he spent the entire day down at Columbia Academy, and Dwayne and I spent a rather thought-provoking hour with him, and he seemed to be very well pleased at the end of the day. Those reports, I don't think, have come back yet, but he certainly was looking at things intensely. Director Burkus and Holmgren and I had multiple meetings regarding the integration and achievement plan that you have, that you'll see later tonight. I just want to remind members that, that the results of these meetings are always fruitful, and that we are still in conversation with St. Anthony New Brighton Administration. We went there, they're coming here next week, to talk about positive, very positive and possible collaborations this summer, as early as this summer with perhaps some of our middle school students. So, that's in the works. The high school study seminar to New York City for the visual and performing artists in our schools is slated to leave on March seventh and return on Friday, the thirteenth. And it looks like everything is really, it's a rigorous and a very academic agenda. I want to thank everybody who has been involved in the planning and the contributing to make this, this trip possible for our students to do active learning in the city. It will be, I want to say special thanks to Don Hoyam, who really has served as travel agent and other duties as assigned to support the high school, something we probably didn't think going into the year we'd be doing, but thank you so much, because you really have pulled it together nicely. And Director Holmgren and Director Burkus, and I will be chaperoned on that trip, and leading some in the performing the band and other in the visual arts, so we are making preparations for the March tenth board meeting, to have people in place to do our reports for us. And let me see if there's, I just want to let you know that the Academic Return on Investment Committee continues to grow and learn together, and we're in the next phase of our project, it's focused on Avid again, and that the focus for this month is on student and financial data collection, and Director Henneken's is leading this phase of the project, and so we will give you a total report when we have the project completed. I've had multiple meetings, or email exchanges with each and every one of you, I think, around the table, and I just told Chair Larkin and Vice Chair Landwehr that in my March sixth superintendent update, there's about, I think about maybe eight to ten requests that board members have, and so what we're going to do is we're going to put a timeline on that, so that you know when they're coming up as either workshop, agenda items, information items, or just things, things in the update. So, I, the, two last things, once I thoroughly enjoyed seeing any and all pictures of our two board members doing the polar plunge and fire and ice, and then it is Don Hoyam's birthday tonight, and she's spending it with her friends here, so happy birthday, Don Hoyam.
Happy birthday, Don.
Happy birthday.
My present to you is, I'm not going to sing. Anything else, Kathy?
That's it.
Okay. We'll keep moving right along. Next up on the agenda is the Columbia Heights Police Presentation. The board will be presented with information on the Columbia Heights Police Department. The presenters tonight will be Police Chief Scott Nidell and Sergeants Eric Johnston, and I'll let Kathy do the introducing.
Thank you so much. Chair members, it is with great pleasure that the chief and the sergeant are here tonight. I want to start off first by saying congratulations on a wonderful article focused on community policing and effective strategies on how to do it right in the Huffington Post. It was an honor to be interviewed for that, and when I looked at the adorable pictures again of all that you were doing, I was reminded of just how on mission you are, and I always like to say that I, they're committed, they're helpful, they're professional, and they're always helpful to us. And so, tonight, I think, in the Huffington Post and what you'll see tonight is really more of their dedication, and in what they're doing with our, with our students, and in this particular body-worn mobile device presentation. The chief and I usually go out for a coffee at least once or twice a year, and I think the last time we did this, he was nice enough, he was talking about the pilot, and then I said, you know, we should probably maybe think about how we're going to present this to our staff, and he said, well, you know, I'll come over, I'll present it to the board, I'll present it to the staff, what would you like? Which is always what I get from the chief, so thank you for that. And that really was the seeds of tonight's presentation, so Chief Nidell and the police force have, have the pilot already in place, and I think the camera's purchased and ready to go, and so I'm going to pass the baton to the two of you, actually, and, and fill us in on what's happening on this particular initiative, and anything else you might want to talk about.
Well, thank you, Superintendent Kelly, and members of the board, and esteemed colleagues, directors in the district here. Thank you first for your kind words about the Huffington Post and some of the strides that we have made, trying to reach out to the community, working with our youth, and please know that you are always counted first and foremost as our most important partner. And as Chair Larkin was reading your mission and going over your core values, and I hear collaboration, and I hear excellence, and I hear community, just those three, in my day-to-day contacts, I mean, I was at Highland today, visiting with my little brother, and I can tell you that this district lives out its core values each and every day. And certainly that's true of the school board, it's true of your teachers and all the great work they're doing, it's true of your lunchroom staff, it's true of each and every person that I interface with in the district, and we're extremely grateful. As Superintendent Kelly alluded to, the police department in Columbia Heights has started with a pilot project that we started about eighteen months ago, and it is in reference to body-worn cameras. Sergeant Eric Johnston, who some might remember as being a high school liaison in a former life with the district, I think for three years?
It was three years ago.
About three years, is coming with tonight. Eric handles a lot of the, the technical issues surrounding the police department, so he's going to start off with an explanation of what the recorders are, how they function, and then I'll get into some of the issues regarding policy and some other things, and of course, we'll have any amount of time that is required for questions and follow-up and feedback.
Thank you very much for having us. You guys know, technology is moving about as fast as it possibly can, and so this is kind of the next evolution in, in police department technology, is the body-worn camera system. We did a lot of research last year, and what we figured out was TASER is a product that we wanted to go to, and there's a few reasons for that. But we're going to be covering tonight what the wearable cameras are, what our policy is on, on using those, and then some frequently asked questions that you might have. We have two models of wearable cameras that you might see out there, and they're both pictured here. The one on the left is what we call the body camera, and that's going to be the most common one that you see. It's also the one that's actually affixed on the front of my uniform right here, and this is how you'd see most officers would be wearing it. The second one is called Flex Camera, and that one is, we do have a few of those, we use them for specialty units and anybody that might need a different view. That one tends to mount up a little bit higher, I have one mounted here on the side of my shirt, on my collar. You might also see it mounted on headgear and things like that as well. We have some officers that wear them on hats, it tends to record a little bit more of what an officer's actually seeing or viewing, but it's got wires and stuff around your head, so it's a little bit less comfortable. We issue them to all police officers, we will be also having our community service officers in reserve wear them as well. The video recorders do have thirty seconds of pre-event recording, that doesn't have sound, but basically it's running in kind of a buffering mode, so when you push the button, it gives you the thirty seconds before in video only. And then once these videos are captured, they get uploaded to a server at TASER, so TASER manages the video for us, they provide a secure server, and then we can download that video back as we need it. Show you what that looks like, you guys might have heard some, some beeping as I was going through here, and I was actually recording as I walked up. Just bring up a couple cameras, so you guys can actually take a look at them and see them. This is the Flex I talked about, and this is the body-worn. So this is the same camera that I'm wearing, I'm just plugging it into this application here, and of course, it's going to give me any trouble, but it figures it out. See if I can get this up, and if not, I came with a video that I recorded yesterday. So, there's a switch on the top, it's like Member Larkin has figured it out, there's a...
You can tell by the look on his face.
The, when it's, when it's on, that puts it in that buffering mode, and then you have to push the button off of that, so most people would have it in the on mode. And this isn't actually picking up right now, so what I'm going to go ahead and do is, this was recorded yesterday, we actually had a promotional ceremony, so we got Chief Gorman here was being captured in that thirty-second pre-event, and then it's going to pick up here in just a minute. This is an example of an officer that was wearing one yesterday, one of our ceremonies for Sergeant Titus, who was recently promoted. Right at about the thirty-second mark, you're going to see that audio is going to kick in here.
I hope this was edited.
There was the officer pushing the button to activate the camera.
You can tell that this is a long course of endeavor, because the entire back of the room is lined with people, right? All the room up front, and standing in the back. So, I wanted to thank everybody for coming and to welcome everyone.
And you can hear that that gets both audio and video, this uses a wide-angle lens to kind of record.
And we're here today, obviously...
Pause this one here, and I think, and this one failed to load, so it's giving me some trouble here, but, I think you kind of get an idea of what that, that video would look like there, so.
We'll talk a little bit about policy. There's a lot of questions around body-worn cameras, and with any new technology, obviously people have concerns. One of the concerns is, you know, is obvious, when are you going to be recording people? When are you going to be recording kids? When are you going to be recording situations? Now, remember that there's always a thirty-second pre-event recording that happens, although that doesn't have audio. So as our officers, presumably in our schools, more often than not, it's going to be our liaisons, are walking in the school, camera will be turned on, but it won't necessarily be recording. We want them to record if there's going to be some sort of a police action, so if an officer's been called to a situation, maybe there's a disruption of some sort, perhaps there's an unknown medical emergency, something like that. If there's an action where there's going to be, we think, a police action, then that officer is being told to record that. You know, if they're meeting with school staff, it won't be recording. If they're in a sensitive area, and this would be a concern, if I had a child in the school, like a locker room, it won't be recording. The only time that they will be recording is when they think there's a good likelihood that there's going to be some sort of a police action. Now, when I say that, again, it's on, and so when they hit that, they'll have the thirty seconds before, but we think that that's helpful, because, you know, sometimes as you're walking through the school, you don't know when a disruption's going to happen almost right in front of you, but then they'll be asked to hit the button, record that interaction, and we think that that's important for a couple of reasons. First of all, it records evidence, and the, the evidence, you know, could be useful for the school's purposes, it could be useful for police purposes. Secondly, it helps to protect our officers from, from claims that they acted inappropriately somehow. And third, it provides for us a level of transparency with our public, so that if a parent comes in and says, I understand that my child was talked to in a, in a course way, or my child was handled inappropriately, or there was an amount of force that was used with my child that was not appropriate to the situation, we have the ability then to be transparent and say, you know, hopefully, presumably, we're going to have that, that we'll be able to show that parent. So, use of force incidents, you know, in, as you all know, I think, as the school board, are very infrequent in our schools, very infrequent. You guys have done an absolutely excellent job of handling concerns with students that do get disruptive, and our liaisons are not routinely called to those incidents, but when they are called to those incidents, now we have the ability to record that, and that's what they'll be asked to do. Again, the recorded videos are stored on a remote server managed by TASER International and controlled by the Columbia Heights Police Department. So, part of the package that we have with TASER is not only the devices themselves, but we also contracted with them for upgrades, we also contracted with them for storage. When our officers come in, each officer has a camera that's assigned to them. At the end of their shift, they bring it in, and they put it into a bank charger, that bank charger downloads all of that video to a secure server, and then only we have access to it. We can forward that video, when appropriate, electronically, or we can download it onto some other media if we choose to. But that's part of what we do with TASER, so it recharges, and it, it downloads through its charger at the police department. Records are retained according to police department policy and state statute based on the nature of the incident. So, let's say that there was some sort of an assault that was captured, we would keep that for a longer period of time than just a routine video. So let's say that an officer went to disturbance in the lunchroom, and there was no charges that resulted from that, there was no crime that resulted, something like that would go off of our system after six months. If there's some sort of a criminal offense, we would wait until that offense had been adjudicated. Okay? Right now, I think that there's some bills in the legislature that are trying to put some guidance there, but we, for now, are in, looking at best practices and what our community already does with, with video evidence, and that's kind of been the guideline so far. And then released per the rules set forth in state statute. Kind of talked about this a little bit, you know, again, as your kids are walking down the hallway, are they being recorded? Is that video going to be, you know, available, under what circumstances? Again, the cameras will be on, typically when our liaisons or other officers are here for whatever reason, but in the buffering mode, it continues to drop off. So, when that officer pushes the button, and they want to start recording, they've got the thirty seconds of pre-event video, which does not have the audio, and then from the point that they push the button, they'll have audio and video until they then power that camera into the standby mode again. As to who has access with the recorded videos, officers can review their videos, investigators and supervisors can look at all videos, obviously administrators as well, and then public requests are handled according to data privacy regulations and state statutes that we have here in the state of Minnesota. So, again, some of the best practices were incorporated into our policies, guides from the International Associations of Chiefs of Police, other entities, some places, communities in Minnesota like Burnsville have used these devices very successfully for, you know, I think with some officers at least for three to four years as an agency rollout. I think that, you know, some have done it now as a full deployment, which is what we did for probably the last two years, and I can tell you that as an industry, there's a huge wave of police agencies that are looking at full deployments of wearable cameras. I mean, agencies as, as large as the NYPD are examining, you know, costs and implications. NYPD, I think, having about thirty-six thousand police officers, so this is, I think, probably the next generation of technology for, for officers for evidence. for evidence recording. And again, after incidents in New York City, incidents in Ferguson, Missouri, I think there is a higher calling publicly for transparency and to make sure that, you know, police officers are acting in a manner that, you know, reflects their mission as a, as a policing agency. And so, that's why we're moving in the direction that we are. I think we're at questions. So, is there any questions that the, that the board would have, or anyone else in attendance? Yes?
I would imagine there's plenty of capacity on those cameras to record an entire incident for however long you need to. Is that correct?
Yep. The, the limitation that we seem to be bumping up against is battery strength, and so in the standby mode and then with some recording, we're getting about 12 hours of battery. But the, the actual memory in the camera doesn't even come close to filling up. And every time that they put it into recharge, it obviously docks and downloads and, and kind of starts over again. So, so the storage of, of the, you know, the, the media or of the, you know, the audio and video recording won't reach capacity.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I was just curious, I mean, you talk about people who have access to the videos, are there safeguards to prevent people from actually downloading from those servers, those video files?
You know, that was one of the reasons that we looked at the TASER platform. Certainly, we have audio and video in the, in the police department. Right now, we're in a part of a countywide consortium for police records and for storage of pictures and some other things through all of the, the different county law enforcement agencies. And when we looked at some of the technical pieces of this, as far as the software, implementing the software, our concerns over the security of the software, TASER was head and shoulders above other options for other camera systems or even beyond probably what we thought our capacity was to be able to store this internally. So, you know, the security of that video was something that was really important to us. The access to the video was something that was really important to us, and we felt as though they provided the best solution. Obviously, not just for our police department. This is a service that they're doing for hundreds, if not thousands, of police departments as well.
Okay, thank you.
I heard in, I read an article about the Burnsville, that they were doing it, and that the complaints on incidents like went down like dramatically just with the cameras. So, I think it was in, you know, yeah, in day and age, it's, it's really, you know, something that technology is kind of offering, but it, you know, kind of nips it at the butt, so I like it.
But, yeah, I think that that's a great point for us as a policing agency. Once somebody knows that the incident's been recorded, they're probably less likely to put forward some sort of an allegation that was untrue. But the other thing that we can do with recordings, if a person comes in and there's some sort of a concern or complaint generated, is sometimes you just show them what actually happened. And frankly, sometimes people just remember something differently. I mean, sometimes they're acting on emotion, sometimes there's a level of intoxication, whatever happened there, where you bring them back and you show them maybe how, what the officer said and did, but also maybe what their part in it was. And, you know, I think that that's been an educational tool that we've been able to use with people as well. Again, not everyone probably thinks that they're lying when they make up, you know, a series of, or a sequence of events, but they probably just sometimes remember it differently. And, and, you know, it certainly gives us some great tools to be able to go back and, and address some of the concerns that the public has. And even in our squad car-based camera system where, you know, for the most part, you had to be standing right in front of the car, you know, we were able to, to, you know, really more effectively address some of those concerns, either because they were in front of the car or because the audio portion was still recording when they weren't in front of the car and they were addressing members of the public.
Anybody else?
Okay. I want to thank you guys for coming. Before I let you go, though, if someone wanted to read the article, it's on your Facebook page, there's a link, correct? Is there some place?
There is a, a link to, to the article, and Columbia Heights Public Schools and the principal of Highland Elementary, Mr. Witt was also mentioned in the article. And, you know, just another very great and positive article that highlights some of the important partnerships in our community, not just on the police department side, but certainly on the school district side too. And again, we're just very grateful for that ongoing relationship. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Great. Moving along, up next on the agenda is Integration Achievement Report. The board will be presented with information on the Integration Achievement Report. Eric, you might want to make sure I turn that camera off.
Chairman Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, pleased to be here tonight to talk with you about our integration and achievement budget for 2015-16. Of course, our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunities for every learner, I think very appropriate for any work that is done in the areas of achievement and integration. Core values, probably tonight, in this presentation at least, emphasizing excellence and community, the work of both achievement and integration. Just a little bit of background knowledge on this one, there are some state mandates to support college and career readiness. And one of the big ones for that is what we'll talk about tonight, achievement and integration. There's also the world's best workforce, which we've talked about in the past, I'm sure we'll talk about more with you a little bit tonight even. But both of those mandates are there to really promote college and career readiness. And so, as we hear about the changing workforce, the retirement of the boomers, of the changes to our demographics, the emphasis on college and career readiness has become really a state focus and something that we as educators are required to address. So, these two mandates really have their own characteristics. One of the major ones is that achievement and integration is funded. And so, there is a state, again, goal that is given to us, that we cut our achievement gap in half by 2017. And that we work to increase integration of our schools, and that we write a three-year district plan and an annual budget. But with that, we really are trying to support the second mandate, which is to create the world's best workforce, which is not funded. So, those dollars then are also to be used simultaneously to cut that achievement gap, but also to increase college and career readiness for all students. And with that, then, we do report annually on student achievement, on how we are faring in that to MDE. So, how do we do that? The first one is through direct student support. And so, you will see that through direct student support, we're talking about lots of different kinds of programming, lots of kinds, lots of different kinds of services that really help our students to achieve that college and career readiness. So, those are all integration-funded programs that, again, would support not only the mandates of achievement and integration, but of the world's best workforce as well. The other part of that is professional development, and you'll see, again, some very important parts of the professional development that goes on in our district that we feel, again, helps our teachers to prepare kids for college and careers. So, with that, then, our achievement and integration budget, which is, you can see, is a total of about $980,000 for our district, it can be divided into those different pieces. So, we spend the vast majority of those dollars on direct student support. And again, with that, you can see that that includes Avid at four of our buildings next year, and includes the high school, the portion of salary that goes to our high school Avid teachers, our high school academic counselor, our high school early college support teachers that we will have in place next year, our high school college advisory system called Ramp Up from the University of Minnesota, cultural and urban liaisons, magnet programming, behavior and academic interventions, interpretive services, and WMEP tuition asterisk there as we go through this transition, not entirely clear what that will be, but using those dollars then to, again, support integration and to support achievement. About $100,000 goes to professional development in the area of Avid. There is a lot of training that's included in becoming a, a building that provides Avid, training and creating a culture of academics. If you have been to any of our elementary schools, you know probably that there is a system in place called responsive classroom. We send teachers to this annually as they join us so that all of our elementary teachers have that training. Developmental designs is at the middle school, and positive behavior interventions and support is, another word for that is, at our high school, keep it real. And so, our dollars are used to help train teachers in these areas. And then, of course, WMEP, one of the things that they do is provide lots of opportunities for training and equity, and we use its dollars to support that money directly that goes to WMEP to provide that to the member districts. Finally, there's about $76,000 then that is used for the administration costs. There's a mandatory amount of dollars that we do pay to WMEP to be part of that collaborative. And then, we also help to support our district personnel who work with integration enrollment of our students. So, our budget is, as you can see, again, largely directed to students directly as opposed to indirectly, and that, again, also is mandated by the state that we not exceed a certain dollar amount to, to professional development or administration, that we gear that, those dollars primarily to direct student support. So, with that, then, there will be some next steps. Of course, tonight, this is your information item. We will have to present and discuss this because of the ties to the world's best workforce. There is a leadership team there that we will be meeting with tomorrow. We're talking also about the ties that they have to the integration plan and how those two work together to really create the world's best workforce. We'll bring this back to you as an action item, hopefully for your approval on March 10th. On March 15th, we are required to submit that then to the Minnesota Department of Education for their approval. And then, usually, it's about May, June even, where we are notified of either the approval of that budget or any need for changes to that budget. So, tonight, this is meant, again, to provide you with the, what we are proposing to do, and I welcome any questions.
Yeah, I guess I was curious, I'm kind of going through and looking at some of the targets and the key indicators are pretty specific. Is there, what happens if those targets aren't met? We just readjust and, I mean, what happens?
Well, if, and you're talking, I think you're talking about the plan itself, for the three-year plan, where we have specific, very specific targets, yes, for achievements across our different ethnic groups. And if we don't hit those, obviously, we will have to adjust. We're not entirely clear at this point how MDE will work with us on that. There potentially could be, you know, the need to work closely with them on what other things could we be doing that we're not doing, planning, working together on that. We, as Superintendent Kelly said, we worked just recently with them on the Continuous Improvement Plan. In that case, it was a chance for us to present to them what we're doing, hear back from them what other school districts are doing, get feedback and suggestions for other resources we might consider. So, I'm, we've not, this is all new, this is, this is the first time, we're in the second year now of this, so just beginning of the second year, so nobody's really gone through that process yet. So, but I'm, I would guess it would be very similar in the way it's, it rolls out.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Dwayne.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, the 2015-2016 school calendar. Board will be presented with information on the 15-16 calendar, and Nicole Hallaby?
Thank you, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. I'm here to give you some information regarding the 15-16 development of the 2015-16 school calendar. I'll be coming to you at a future meeting to ask for approval for action, to approve the calendar. In this school district, we have a very comprehensive group of parents from all buildings and grade levels, directors, community ed, athletic director, principals, teachers, non-licensed staff that all get together and, in January, under the direction of Superintendent Kelly, as well as statute of what we have to, holidays that we have to follow, and amount of hours of instruction we have to comply with, and also work closely with HR so that we're meeting all the contractual obligations for all of the units. And we get together and we have meetings after school on Wednesdays, and we play with different things in the calendar. This year, just to remind you, for the 15-16 school year, Labor Day is very late. Labor Day is September 7th. So, unless you apply for a waiver through the state of Minnesota, if you're having a large construction project, all schools must start on September 8th. So, that puts a little rub for us. We try to get done as early as we possibly can in June, because as Superintendent Kelly said, we can't control the heat in September, we have to be in school, but it gets pretty miserable for the little ones if they have to sit and learn when it gets really hot in June, as well as we like to make way for summer academy folks coming in. So, we were able to have a nice calendar that you have in front of you with the last day for students on Friday, June 3rd, and teachers returning and doing their grading and cleanup and wrapping up the school year on Monday, June 6th. Any questions, comments?
Curiosity question, I guess, I mean, normally, we're almost a week later getting out. Where do we find the, the days between the beginning and the end?
So, sometimes we look at doing in-service a little bit more heavy in November and some in January and February. We've chosen, working with teaching and learning, to do some of the in-service of teachers prior to the school year. Number one, because we are starting later, that's a typical time that they're used to coming back that week, the third week in August, as well as it really enables teaching and learning to front-load the learning for teachers while they're fresh, off a break, and use the skills that they have throughout the school year, starting at the beginning of the year. We did look, we did this year look at doing in-service on Martin Luther King Day, no students, and with the understanding, talking to a few of our staff members who were sensitive to that, that we will be really working on equity and the, the words that Martin Luther King left for us to work with our students to close the achievement gap. So, we were, this is not something that we really want to look at year after year, but all of the staff and the parents understood that it's an exceptional year because of Labor Day starting late, so.
Thank you.
Did the groups that work on this pretty much agree? I mean, are we, is this pretty much with the consent of all those groups?
Yes. I'm, I am, I say right at the beginning that we will have as many meetings as we need to have to get to 100% consensus. I, I really believe that because then they go back and talk to their PTOs, the parents, and the staff talk to their unions, and I really want people to feel like it is a collaborative calendar and that to, you know, it's hard to make 100% happy because there's always a little something you might want to... want to do differently, but within the constraints that we have, every single person around the table concurred that it was a good calendar considering the late start, not much we could do.
Anybody else?
I just have a comment. I've never seen, I, there's so many, there's so many days that the kids are, I mean, because the school year is kind of squished down, there's not very much downtime on this calendar. I just think about when we have the, you know, we have those really incredibly cold days or snowy days, if there is going to be an area where we can pick up those days, we're still over, I mean, we're still, how many days over the state requirement?
Yeah, they configure it by hours now instead of days, starting three years ago. And Bill and Director Holmgren and Superintendent Kelly and I have a very careful chart that we're tracking in the unfortunate where as would, we don't want to have that happen again as it did last school year where we really track it closely and fortunately, because of our contracts require more instructional hours, we were okay, so.
I suppose worst-case scenario is we can add 10 minutes a day.
Yeah, some schools did that.
All right.
Anybody else, questions or comments?
I do know that some schools do ask for waivers to start early as well, so.
Yeah, if you have a large construction project, you're allowed to request a waiver.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we don't have anything that large in the fall because we thought about that.
Okay.
We have thought about that.
Okay.
And it won't be for another, I think we counted 11 years that it starts, it's late again, so.
Anybody else? Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the action items. First up is the American Indian Education Resolution. In accordance with Minnesota Statute 124D.78, the board will be asked to approve the American Indian Education Committee affirming that the committee does concur and that the district's programs meet American Indian student needs. Nicole?
I, to remind the board, I brought this to a work session to kind of go through the history of the consortium between Fridley, Columbia Heights and Spring Lake Park. And it is required by federal and state law that every year the committee meets and concur that the districts in the consortium are meeting the needs of the American Indian students. So that's what this annual action item is.
Okay, so I would look for a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Motion by Laura, second by Ted. Any discussion?
Just to state that we do have the resolution signed by all the parents in our packets, so there is evidence of that.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm just going to read this, this is motion by Member Palmer, second by Member Landwehr to approve a resolution that the, that American Indian Education Committee concurrence that the district's programs meet American Indian student needs. And for this, I would need a roll call, please, Laura.
Palmer?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Landwehr?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Meyer? Aye.
Curious.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Nicole. Next up is the approval of the 2014-2015 revised budget. The board will be asked to approve the revised 2014-2015 budget. Yeah, it'll be, to Holmgren.
Okay, Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. We talked about this last week and, but we'll briefly go through and hit the highlights so that we can have this up for the TV for the public. But as you know, last year, our expenditure budget came in right, pretty much right on. We were actually under a budget by $330,000, but when we look at a budget in the general fund by itself of over 40 million, that's really a small number when we look at the scope of the whole budget, excuse me. But on the, on the revenue side, we did have some shortages in the 2014 budget when we talked about targeted services being less than expected by 250, a special ed revenue was less than expected, desegregation revenue was overstated in our revenue budget, and our homeless transportation reimbursement did not cover the increased demand of our students. And this continues to be a problem as we go through this year. This is actually, we have more homeless transportation going on this new year than we did actually in 2014. But the actions that we took to make sure that our budget's coming in balance this year, first of all, we had a meeting with all our directors and principals and went through their budgets looking for efficiencies and economies. And then we took budget recommendations from the directors and principals and took, took some actions against their budgets. Of course, we updated the student enrollment projections and based on actual enrollment figures, as you know, back in June, that first budget we bring to you really is a lot of assumptions put together. We don't know exactly what's, what is there when we took in enrollment and we look at who our actual employees will be. Okay, then we forecast our revenues against that new current enrollment and then we are looking very strictly this year, more than we have in the past because we don't want to be short like we were this past year. So what we do with that, with our new budget now, for our revised budget, we insert our actual employees, there's quite a few, we had some turnover, and we, so we adjusted all our revenues to our current enrollment and adjusted our building and district department budgets based on the revenue forecast. Of course, positions were hired as needed under careful review. As you know, some of, they've been kind of trickling in this year, what we've, we've had a little bit of difficulty finding some of our employees, but we would hire them as we need them. So when we look at our revenue budget, try to compare it to when we started out the year, the original budget, we had a revenue at about 40 and one and a half million. We have dropped that when we took in consideration targeted services and special ed down to 39.8, so that is a decrease of $576,000. Our restricted areas didn't change a lot, but same thing, when we go and we talk about, okay, now we know who we have hired, that really happens when we look at our grants and title and integration, a lot of those people, we don't know who they're going to be back in June. So you see, we're spending a little less there, but at the same time, you know, there's less revenue, but we're spending less, they really match out, they really wash out when we look at the restricted side of the budget. Food service, we have a little bump up in enrollment, especially in the high school, and we are serving more meals. So you can see we're generating some more dollars there in Fund II or in food service. And then community ed, a small decrease. And this was, this has to do with the estimates we had together for, especially our new pre-K program. Then we look at the revised expenditure side of the budget. We went from 40,400,000 down to 39.6, so a decrease of 716,000. And I just want to remind you that half of this decrease is because of the 21st Century Grant is no longer here. Back when we put this budget together last spring, we were waiting for word on our 21st Century Grant and we didn't have word yet and we assumed we would, you know, get it and continue, and that did not happen. So a big piece of this decrease is from that, it went away. Again, the restricted piece mainly was grants, we're spending less money there. Food service, I suppose, I guess we are spending more, we are buying more food for the increased meals that we have. And community ed, we have a small uptick when we get the actual employees in place. Now, I did include a summary sheet in your board packet so you can see the summaries of the dollars, because this gets kind of busy up on the screen. But we are expecting to be under budget for the year, so we have an increase of about 140,000. I'm hoping this will be more than that, but this will push us back up above the 10% level now that we've dropped down to 9.6 when we talk about the percentage that we have on hand against the expenditures we have from the year before. Restricted amount, that's going to sink a little more, but remember restricted, these all have fund balance that we can draw on, and health and safety, which you can see the breakdown in your, in your handout. Health and safety does tend to be negative on it every year, but we do levy for that and it comes back the year after. So food service, again, our fund balance should increase just slightly along with community ed. You see that our building fund was, is decreasing by quite a bit because that's, we're doing the project, you know, we borrowed the money last year, now we did the project, we're spending the money back down. We look at debt service, again, we're saving some interest there, so we're going to be spending some less dollars in our payments on our bonds. Our flex account, dental, these are just accounts that we kind of washed through. Student activities, 200,000, that's about what we fundraise on a yearly basis and spend out for supplies and equipment for activities. And then our OPEB trust, really, we're seeing a small decrease in OPEB trust, a very small because these are, you know, estimates still at this point, I don't know exactly who's going to tell me they're going to retire, even though we're getting up to that date pretty soon, and we'll be able to know. So again, there's still some estimates in this, in this budget too, because we don't know what's going to happen. So any questions on that?
So the restricted funds, we really don't have any discretion on those expenditures?
Well, for example, one of our restricted amounts is our capital dollars. Okay, we get approximately $700,000 a year for capital and then we spend that on different projects for our district. So from year to year, that might, we might not spend the whole amount. If you remember last, about two years ago, actually our fund balance was actually up a little bit around 300,000 and now we've actually spent it down a little bit. So that does fluctuate a little bit, but I still, we're controlled by what we spend the dollars on. So it fluctuates from time to time, but we're, we're not in a place where we're trying to, you know, build up a huge fund balance in our restricted fund balance because we can't use it for that. I can't use it for the classroom at all.
Right, that's the, what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else, questions?
Just a comment, the, the excess in the unassigned fund is, we can use that to offset any future expenditures that are unexpected, that's the idea of building up our fund balance.
Yeah, the whole idea of a fund balance is to have money on hand for unforeseen situations that arise when it comes to our budget, which like it did last year. And we certainly had enough money to take care of any type of fluctuation, so that's a reason to have a fund balance. If you run very close to a zero every year and then you run short, well, then you drop on, down into statutory operating debt and the state comes in and tells you how you're going to spend your money. So we never, we never want to get down that low, but I know we were, you know, here a few years back. But even though we've dropped a little bit below that 10% level, we're in a very sturdy financial position yet in this district, we certainly have enough to get us through.
Right, and it's for that reason that I don't want to see our fund balance drop any lower than, than it is.
That sounds like you have some things in place to, not even for just now, but for moving forward to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, we look at this every, every single year. We go through and look at our programming and where we might have to shave something off because we certainly, the goal every year is not to spend down a fund balance in a year.
Anybody else, questions or comments? Okay, if I could, I'd like to get a motion to move this forward.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
That was Lori, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Bill.
Yep, thank you very much.
Move on to board topics. Anybody got anything for board topics?
One thing that I just thought of it as we were going through the integration plan was the importance of parent involvement, and I know that's part of the integration plan, but as I attend seminars and look at research, it's so important for parents not only to be in schools, but, you know, for events, but also be directly involved in their students' studies. And so I would hope that our money could be spent, you know, more towards that and, and I know there's software out there to help people, parents get involved as well, but I just want to throw that out there, that that seems to be a movement that I've seen in the seminars I've gone to, so. And it's backed by research.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, board topics? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting at 8:05.